Okay, we're all ready. So, good evening, everybody, and we're going to call our meeting to order tonight by our city clerk. The record shall reflect that all members are present. If you'll all rise, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and it will be led tonight by Councilmember Rigby.
Please place your hand over your heart and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a public hearing regarding our proposed district boundaries for the by-district elections. So, we're going to open our public hearing, and we're going to have a presentation followed by an opportunity to ask questions and to provide comments on the matter. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a speaker slip and turn it in to the city clerk. And each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. So, what? Oh, and our city attorney, Darrell Piper, is going to introduce the speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 28th, the city council started a process to approve district elections for council members. That process requires at least five public hearings before the city council adopts voting districts. Four public hearings and two workshops have been held to date, and tonight will be the fifth public hearing. We will review the 18 qualified district maps presented to date. It's anticipated that a sixth and final public hearing will be, will occur at the regular city council meeting on June 13. And to that end, it's anticipated that the city council will narrow down the maps to be considered as part of tonight's hearing. They'll also provide staff with instructions as to which maps to bring forward to the June 13 meeting. This review, as all of our others, will be facilitated by Dr. Justin Levitt of the National Demographics Corporation, our city demographer. Dr. Levitt.
Turn your microphone on. I think it's not on, maybe? On the screen, maybe? Where it says in the corner, does it say microphone on?
No, it does.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney Piper. Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and members of city council. And to all you in the public who are here tonight, thank you for attending, and thank you for all of your participation throughout the process. You know, what, I'm going to try to keep this as brief as I can tonight while still going through some of the key elements in case we have any newcomers to our meeting tonight. And so, Mr. Piper has already spoken to the schedule. We've already held, as we've mentioned, several workshops, forums, council hearings. This is our second city council hearing after we've released these draft maps. In fact, actually, I think it's our third after we've released our draft maps. Three hearings after the release of these draft maps are required by AB 350, which is why we're going through this at these special meetings in addition to our regular city council meetings. And on June 13th will be the first city council meeting where we hope to have a maps election. So, as we mentioned tonight, what we're looking tonight to get down to is a number of ma, a smaller number of maps that we can really focus on. And remember that these first two elections will be held, our first two districts will hold their elections in November 2018. The remaining two districts will hold elections in 2020. The mayor will continue to be elected at large by all residents of the city, and that will be in November 2018 as well. Now, in terms of evaluating the plans, what criteria are we using and have we used throughout the process to draw these plans and now, as we look at them, to evaluate them? And really, we talk about two different sets of laws. The first are set out by the federal courts. The first, equal population, set out in a series of decisions going back to Baker v. Carr. This is the principle that districts have to be equal in terms of their total populations. And yes, this is total population as of November or as of April 1st, 2010 census. So, this is a number that will be recalculated on April 1st, 2020, and will have to determine whether or not our districts are still population balanced. When we say equal population, it doesn't have to be precisely equal. The courts recognize that it's important for a smaller community, a city, you know, suburb or small, you know, small city like Vista, to how, to, to not draw lines in ways that would break up the different communities of interest, which we'll talk about in a second. And so, they allow up to 10% deviation in terms of the population differences between the largest and smallest district. As I mentioned last time, this used to be 5%. The courts have kind of lengthened that in the past few years. In addition to equal population, the courts also require us to look at the Federal Voting Rights Act, in particular, Section 2, which defines criteria for, so are groups that have historically faced discrimination or challenges in registration and voting. And even though the courts specifically say that race cannot be the only or even the predominant factor in drawing districts, and we had a Supreme Court ruling last week about this very question. Race and ethnicity, in terms of these protected classes, is something that has to be considered throughout the process. What would be in a district that would, you know, be an effective district? That would allow, in this case, our Latino population here to have the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice? It's going to be something that we have to consider as we're going through the maps. In addition to these federal criteria, we also talk about traditional, right, traditional redistricting criteria. Compactness and contiguity, for example, refer to the shape of the district. Does it make sense? Does it follow visible boundaries, natural and man-made? Does it follow the neighborhoods, the communities that make up the dis, the city? In addition, looking at this, seven years since the last census, where has the city grown? Where has the city grown not, not as fast as in other parts? And so, planned future growth, or even just the growth in the past seven years, is something that we can take into account as justifying why we might have more than a 0% deviation between districts. In addition, a lot of the criteria, these traditional criteria, really focus on communities of interest. And communities of interest are kind of a difficult concept to define precisely because they vary so much from place to place. But the essence of them are things that tie communities and neighborhoods together. Shared interests, views, characteristics, problems, things like school attendance areas, especially for elementary school. You know, if you have kids who are walking down the same streets, going through the same issues with crossing that, you know, crossing from one side of the street to another, that's something the city could be directly involved in doing something about. I just draw on that one because it's something we've heard in other cities. Often, we think about things like highways and major roads that could either serve to divide communities or bring communities together on either side of the freeway because they share issues with traffic or noise. Areas around parks or shopping centers or new development regions and, you know, other legislative boundaries. One of the things we looked at in the green and purple maps were the school district trustee area boundaries because that was, those were electoral maps that were drawn just, you know, about seven or eight years ago. In addition, we've also looked at shared demographic characteristics, income, education, age breakdowns, ancestry going beyond race and ethnicity. So, we looked at a lot of these different features in trying to define communities of interest. And still, none of these are the substitute for the kind of public hearing we've been doing at the workshops and here tonight, getting the public to tell us what the communities of interest are in the city. And so, the last criteria we'll discuss is respecting the voters' wishes. The voters of the city elected a city council, and the drawing of districts should not be used as a way of intentionally pairing incumbents just to pair incumbents, just to put two people together for no other reason than, you know, we, you know, whatever it is. You know, that's not what the purpose of districting is. The purpose of districting is to try to achieve better representation for the city, and the voters should have the right, at the end of the day, to make that decision. They shouldn't use the redistricting process to do it. And just to briefly explain some of these criteria, we've included demographic summaries, and you'll see that each of our plans have a demographic spreadsheet attached to them with most of these data broken down by districts. The key crit, the key things I'll mention briefly here, that first box at the upper left is the total population counts from the 2010 census. And on April 1st, 2010, the United States government counted 93,834 residents of the city of Vista. And that's the number we're using to balance between popul, balance population between districts. So, as you can see, each district would need about 23,500 people to be a balanced district. Now, of course, we know that for many groups, such as the Latino community, this total population count is not going to be the same as the eligible voting count. And so, for the purposes of the Federal Voting Rights Act, we look at eligible voters, or what we call citizen voting age population, or VAP, C-VAP. And we can see here that Latinos, for example, may make up 48% of total population, but only make up 29% of citizen voting age population. And this difference is really important because you could draw majority Latino seats by total population that would not be a majority Latino seat, or even a plurality Latino seat by citizen voting age population. And this is really important because we do see that there are some areas of the city of Vista that do have concentrations of Latinos in particular, particularly in the north, central, and northeastern parts of the city, northwestern parts of the city. Now, since the last time, I'm not going to go through all 18 maps again because they're here tonight in the binders outside. They're online at drawvista.org. But we did receive one new population balanced map since the last meeting. This is the map from students at the Universidad Popular. They spoke to us last time about drawing this, and they have it here tonight to present. In addition, we received two or three other, I think we received three other non-population-balanced ones. I think we received two other non-population-balanced maps and one that was a duplicate of another map we had already received. And so, we've also, so we've been continuing to work with members of the public on this. Some members of the public have written letters withdrawing certain maps. For example, Ms. Fukuyama withdrew her map, and Dr. Christensen withdrew six of his eight maps. Now, because they're legal, we've still included them on the table, summary tables we have here tonight because we want to make sure to provide you with all of the information on all the legal maps we have received. The plan comparison table, we've just highlighted some of our, some of, you know, just a couple of criteria, certainly not all the potential ones. One of the things we do want to highlight are some of the districts in which there's no district that is majority or even plurality Latino. While this is not a requirement of a plan, you know, that's exactly what the Supreme Court ruling earlier this week confirmed, it does open the city up to potential liability in the future. And it would be riskier for the city to adopt a plan that doesn't have a plurality or majority district, simply because that would, another group could come in and say, you had the opportunity, why didn't you do it? Now, perhaps this is not the best case for them to do it in because this is a council that has elected Latinos in the past, including today. And so, but it is something that we want to highlight and flag for you. We've also done potential sequencing options, and you'll see that many of our draft plans have lots of sequencing options. Some of them even have four different potential, any district could be up in any year. And we don't really want to focus on sequencing quite yet. Once we get it a little bit narrowed down, you'll see that the sequences are going to be easier to come to understand. And this is basically just referring to the order in which the districts would be up in election. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions today about the maps. I've included all of the maps in this presentation, so if you would like to speak to a map other than the UP students, I'm happy to pull it up for you while you give your testimony or while we have our discussion later. But, you know, the other thing we want to make sure today is if there are requests for any additional tests or maps with specific changes you'd like to see, that we get that today so that we can have it ready to go for the 13th. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to receiving your questions and comments.
We have one speaker. You want to hear the speaker first? Okay, speaker is Dr. Rob Christensen.
I want to thank the Vista City Council for providing the public the opportunity for, to contribute to the by-district election process. I appreciate the effort that the Universidad Popular students exhibited by drawing and submitting a map that attempts to meet all the criteria set forth by the Vista City Council. After viewing their draft map, relay correspondence, and other resources, I have numerous questions that I would like to put before the council. Question number one, does their map, draft map divide neighborhoods? Their draft, draft map proposed divide neighborhoods, communities of interest, and those include neighborhoods that share linguistic and social economic characteristics, and I cite some of those in the email that I sent to the city council earlier today. Question number two, does their draft map fail, fail to meet the criterion of using major geographic features to separate districts? In their draft map, they use residential streets to separate districts, and I've cited that in my email that I sent to the dis, to the city council earlier today. Number three, do the districts within the draft maps reflect the demographics of Vista? Now, given the demographics and the geographic characteristics of Vista, it's impossible to construct a map that perfectly reflects the demographics of Vista, but it's, but it's possible to create a map where two of the four districts can somewhat mirror Vista When comparing the B and C districts in their draft map to another draft map with similar districts using the citizen voting age population statistic, it appears that their draft map less, less reflects Vista demographics as compared to other draft maps. And this is, this evidence was included in the email that I sent to the city council earlier today. Question number four, who are the stakeholders that constructed their draft map? This is unclear. In a May 10th, May 10th, 2017 email, communication to Dr. Justin Levitt, Anna Ordon from California State University of San Marcos stated, quote, "Universidad Popular students comprise students of Vista as well as other regions of North Santa Fe County." Since students are not identified within the latest submission, it is unknown whether Vista residents materially contributed to the development of their latest draft map. Question number five, were district boundaries drawn in their draft map to significantly advantage or disadvantage future city council candidates? When the Universidad Popular students originally submitted maps on May 10th, 2017, one map contained a political statement that appeared to advocate for one member of the Vista City Council. And by saying that, I'm not saying that member, you know, suggested, you know, told them to do that. And I included that, that evidence in my email to the Vista City Council. Since the stakeholders are not individually identified in their latest submitted draft map, Vista residents or the Vista City Council cannot inquire what motivated the Universidad Popular students to construct the district boundaries contained in their current draft map. This leaves the, the question unanswered for Vista residents and the Vista City Council.
I need you to wrap up your, your minutes are up.
Okay. So, given the outstanding issues and facts read to the current map, and in the spirit of good government and transparency, I request that Vista City Council ask the Universidad Popular students to substantially address the issues and facts previously raised.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker will be Val Brown.
Creating voting districts is a very challenging assignment, especially for us residents. Creating a map that meets all the requirements set out without key psychographic and neighborhood information, coupled with the difficulties posed by lower densities and higher densities, is just plain hard. I spent several hours creating a map I felt represented our unique neighborhoods and shared identity. I wish I'd had more neighborhood information provided along with the maps, maybe even some of the information that was used to create the community identity element of the general plan. When it comes to other districts that didn't have any criteria on which to base their boundaries other than the demographics that were in the packet and trying to meet the numbers. I thought I was on track, only to find out that my map was rejected because it didn't meet some criteria. Roundtable community discussions, working with our expert here, may have allowed us to draw maps together to present so that we could have had community conversations about our neighborhoods. That said, my hope is that the council will thoughtfully think through the decision based on what they know about the neighborhoods that surround their homes. Please do not break up neighborhoods. I personally found out how many people are affected by what happens on Breeze Hill when we spent nearly 18 months fighting an ill-advised apartment project. People from all over Vista weighed in, and we found out how connected we are to the neighborhoods on the other side of Melrose, including Vale Terrace and the neighborhoods in the Mar Vista area. They all weighed in about what happens in our neighborhood affects their neighborhood. Since my map wasn't included in this round, I can only ask that Breeze Hill and its surrounding neighborhoods not be separated from our like-minded neighbors to the east of Melrose Drive and down to Cannon Road and over to Mar Vista. I would suggest that our district goes south to Cannon and east to Mar Vista at the 78. I have reviewed the maps submitted, and I don't see one that reflects these boundaries, although it may. I just had trouble reading them because some of the districts are the same color, and I couldn't see where the boundaries were. We've suffered quite a bit by planning decisions, and we'd like to know that our district is represented by someone who shares our unique concerns. We're a mix of rural and semi-rural neighborhoods with high-density apartments. We are not a master-planned community like Shadow Ridge, and therefore, we share our common concerns about development patterns and how they affect our specific communities. We have a lot of rural land, a subject to zone changes and infill development. Let's make sure we're keeping our neighborhoods that identify with each other together and not draw false boundaries in order to meet a quota. Let's take the time and do this thoughtfully. I'm requesting that council set a workshop to draw a draft prior to the June 13 meeting so residents can weigh on it before you vote. We all witnessed what happens when we planned ad hoc from the DIAS when mixed-use zoning for North Santa Fe was passed. Please don't let that happen with our election districts. Take the time, meet ahead of June 13, come up with a draft that residents can weigh on prior to making a final decision. That decision will affect Vista for generations to come, and it's a decision that will not easily be changed once made. Thank you.
Thank you. Kasuya Fukuyama.
Thank you for the opportunity. Oh, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity, city council members and city officials. I spent lots and lots of hours, and I came up with my own draft. Then, I did study others' draft also, then at the last meeting, when Sarah Spinks' husband spoke on her draft. Anyway, I really agree with what he told me, Sarah Spinks. Anyway, what I agreed with, with them is that, that each district, A, B, C, D, has have distinct character of the community, I call sub-community, in the city of Vista. A is downtown area. He did say there are a lot of restaurants and breweries that Vista isn't getting known for, and the people do actually have access to a lot of these places and stores on, on the foot. That's something we don't have in other areas. And District B, if you see it, that's a mostly rural area, and this is, again, different characteristics from District A, which is downtown. And move on to C, that's a lot of small business along Highway 78 and plus, plus some residential areas. And D is mostly, as you can see, consists of a Shadow Ridge that's a large area of truck home development and plus light industrial areas. I believe that each district has their own issues, wishes, desires that none of the other districts have. So, I believe that Sarah Spinks' map is a just right one for everyone in the city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karina Contreras.
Thank you again for conducting this type of a hearing. I would just like to second what some other individuals said. I know that we are, you know, doing what we have to as far as criteria goes to let the public know and, and give them a venue to speak. I did have the opportunity to go to Oceanside to take a look at what they were doing, and it was phenomenal. They had an individual with a map that they could zoom in as, as other people were coming up and talking about certain areas and how they believe that, you know, this neighborhood should be connected with this other neighborhood. I mean, it was phenomenal. The, the type of civic engagement is something that this city could strive for by using that type of model. So, it would be really, really good if we could have another meeting that's a little bit more of a workshop, as you see there are more people trickling in to this whole idea of by-district elections. I know that it's been announced a ton, and, you know, I would hope that more people would be aware of it, but at this point, it does seem like there needs to be a little bit more outreach. I don't know what. It's something that perhaps, you know, we could have a discussion about why the outreach that we've done hasn't had the effect of bringing more people to these meetings. But in any case, I, I'm really happy with seeing the maps that have been put forth, especially the one that we're looking at right now. I did have a concern before about the downtown district being divided between, you know, three or, or four districts. This kind of puts that whole community into one space with one representative, and I, I think that that is very appropriate for that region. And as it was said before, you know, you have District B here that's a little bit more rural, and they're totally different concerns. We've talked a lot about the Latino population here. Definitely, there's, there's reasons why we want to keep those neighborhoods together because they do share a lot of commonality, you know, whether it be tons of foot traffic because that's the, the mode of transportation that people use when, you know, they get off the bus to go to work, or they go shopping. So, we want to, we want to take into account the fact that there are really identifiable neighborhoods here in Vista. I know another speaker spoke to the Breeze Hill area. You know, I myself, I'm not over there a ton because I'm either near where I live, which is Bo Beer, or a farm site that I'm working on off Foothill. So, I think these maps are, they're really great, and the public participation has been good, but I think it could be better. So, if we could just brainstorm how to get more people here and involved earlier before the vote happens on the final map. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last speaker, council. So, do I have any, anybody have any? I see no buttons pushed. Oh, there we go. Okay, Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin, sorry.
Could I ask our city attorney to remind us where we're at in the process?
Is your microphone on?
Sorry. I wanted to ask our city attorney to remind us what we need to accomplish at this step of the process and what, can you walk us through the, the rules of the, of the procedure here and what we need to accomplish tonight and what we can yet accomplish at our next meeting?
Again, the, the rules of procedure under the system that we're using requires five public hearings prior to the adoption of a map, the last hearing occurring in connection with the actual adoption. We will actually have, as currently scheduled, six public hearings and two additional workshops. I am not familiar with what everyone has done, but it is, I have been advised that certainly we have done far more than most other cities in terms of outreach and in terms of meetings. And I'm not personally aware of any other city that has managed to produce 18 maps and over 100 people as we had on our Saturday workshops. But that is where we are in terms of our position. We've had, this is the fifth public hearing. The sixth one is- The sixth one is currently scheduled for June the thirteenth.
And I commend your good work in that of your office and also our city manager, and I want to particularly thank our city clerk, who has opened her office. And for those who don't know, I made a request that the city clerk's office be open for any citizen that wanted to come and to bring a map to receive some one-on-one assistance. In addition, I know that Dr. Levitt has made himself available during our meetings and at the conclusion of our meetings to answer one-on-ones. And I also want to commend you for being very quick to respond to citizens who have sent you maps, to analyze them and to give feedback. We appreciate that. So, Mr. Piper, are we thinking that we want to, we want to set our sights on a number of maps tonight to move forward to our next meeting?
It's, staffs hope that the council tonight can choose one or more maps to be brought forward on June thirteenth. We are under a ninety-day clock in terms of litigation, the threat of litigation that was made against us. That clock actually expires before the council's June twenty-seventh city council meeting, so we felt that bringing this to a conclusion on June thirteenth is in the best interest of the city.
I have one additional technical question, which is with regard to the deviation of total population. We've talked repeatedly about the ten percent number. We have a total deviation for the map. Is that the number we're trying to keep, a ten percent, or is it ten percent per district?
No, that's the total, it's a total, you're right about this, the total number, total deviation number. We're trying to keep under ten percent.
Okay.
So individual districts generally, you know, five is the maximum. You could theoretically have a six percent over/under, and the other, keep all the others at two percent, and, but, you know, generally, you know, ten percent is that total deviation, and that's actually the largest, difference between the largest and the smallest. So the middle two districts don't even matter there.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Councilmember Green.
All right, so I reviewed all of the maps. I reviewed all of the information about the California voting age population and the different districts and the pairings, and, you know, how can we have the two highest districts with the voting age population being where it needs to be? And I'm just going to come out and say it. Based off of the eighteen maps that I've reviewed, I have ranked my top four maps, and the number one map that I liked was the Deirdo map, which actually wasn't a city-drawn map, so whoever a Deirdo is, I like you, congratulations. My number two map that I liked was the Purple Draft map. The number three map that I liked is the new one submitted by the UPS students. We can obviously investigate to see, you know, who did that. The reason why I do like that one is because it looks like there's three stakeholders right in that downtown area, and I feel like that downtown area is really important to the city. It's an area that we're revamping, and I think just having one person representing that area, as we saw from having the sign named without everybody having input in it, is a big deal, fired up the community a lot. So I think the more stakeholders having access in that area is a big deal. The one problem that I really don't like with that, the student map, and why it's ranked number three, is because I do feel like the Breeze Hill area is different than that Shadow Ridge area. I don't know how to balance out that, which is why the Deirdo and Purple Draft, which kind of keep Breeze Hill separate from Shadow Ridge a little bit, I liked those. And I see no reason why what inevitably looks like it would be my district, whether it's, you know, as B or C, depending on the deal, you know, should go on the other side of the seventy-eight there. So you'll notice that every map that I picked, you know, where I'm at from Foothill Drive over here, I don't think I should be servicing Breeze Hill. It's literally all the way on the other side. And there is a school district boundary, actually, right next door to my house, where Breeze Hill Elementary picks up and drives across town every day. I don't get it, but there is that, but it's not really a connection for me. And then the fourth map is the Cipriano Vargas number one. So, and actually, I had that one three and the other one four. So Vargas was three, UPS was four. So out of the eighteen that I saw, personally, those would be my top four picks. I was looking at altering the green map, not only because I like the color and name green, but I thought if I could just give this B area back to here and keep this D area either the same or, you know, give C back here, that would be it. But in looking at the purple map, it is exactly that. It gives B back to B, and it just keeps D having that area. I didn't realize that this area right here is twenty-seven-hundred population, and this B area is seven-hundred population, so it's real tough on the variance. But anyways, hopefully you got that. That's my feedback for you so far through the map process. I'd be anxious to see what my other council members were thinking, if any of those were in their tops, and kind of go from there.
Was your number two the green one?
Number two was the Purple Draft.
The purple one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I had Deirdo, Purple, Vargas, and then UPS Students won.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just making a quick note about Joe's favorite maps. I really appreciate everybody coming out for these meetings and everybody who's participated in the process to put some maps out there. It really does help us to hear what your opinions are about the neighborhoods, the particular communities that we have, and how you want them kept together or the boundaries that you'd like to see. And some of these maps, my biggest concern with them is the Breeze Hill area. Many of the maps that have been submitted do take that neighborhood and split it apart. And that is a distinct and identified neighborhood, and that concerns me to split that apart. So I would like to see a map that has Breeze Hill kept together, not split up. And in some of these maps, to be quite honest with you, it was very difficult to see what some of these roads are that they're split on because they really don't go along a major artery, and I was trying to figure out a couple of them, where they were split up at. So that's one of my concerns. And regarding the downtown area, I go back and forth on that because I, there's a part of me that says, yes, I'd like to see that area kept in one district because, for various reasons, but then Councilwoman Green makes a good point, that that is really a big identifying area for the entire city, and I think it needs to have representation from the entire city for that area. So that's a tough one for me, because I keep going back and forth on that one. So those are my thoughts, is that we need to keep the neighborhoods, not split them up. And, yes, we will have districts that have different neighborhoods in them, but we don't want to split up any of the neighborhoods into different districts. So those are my thoughts. The other thing that I've had a lot of people talk to me about is can we just do the school district boundaries? And my thought is, no, we can't do the school district boundaries for a few reasons. One, we're dividing up our city into four council seats. The school district is divided into five seats. And as Councilwoman Green said, the Breeze Hill area, which you can see is, Breeze Hill is down here, Melrose, south of, right at Sunset and Melrose area, and there are kids who are in the Breeze Hill district way up here in the northern part of the city that get bussed across town, and vice versa, kids from across the east way are getting bussed to the west. So that, the school districts, plus you have kids in Vista residents who go to school in the San Marcos Unified School District. They're not in a Vista Unified School District. And then we have some people who are in the Vista Unified School District who are living in residence of Oceanside, coming into the city of Vista to go to school. So for those various reasons, using the school district boundaries just does not make sense for districting the city council elections. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know we've had that conversation a few times with people. So those are my comments. Of the maps that we've had presented here, I actually liked Ms. Fukuyama. I know you spoke about withdrawing your map. I don't see if she's still here. Oh, there you are. I know you spoke about withdrawing your map and throwing your support behind Ms. Spinks' map, but I actually thought your map was well thought out, and a lot of the downtown area was included in that District A. So I liked that map, but I also had the Spinks' map because of the district in the downtown area, but as I said, I go back and forth on that one. The Purple map, I think, is a good starting place for different reasons as well. And anyway, those are my thoughts on the maps. I really, I think it's very important that we keep our neighborhoods, they're definitely identified neighborhoods together and we don't split them up.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think our goal tonight should be to narrow down to three or four maps that are being presented here, and if there's a particular map that maybe needs to be tweaked a little bit, maybe we can have that come back. I liked what my fellow council members have said. The Spinks' map, initially, when I first saw it, I thought that was a pretty good idea. However, I do think we want to avoid the issues that we've had in the past, recent past, and learn from our mistakes, you might say, and that I think everybody wants to have a say-so in our downtown, so I think having all four districts somewhat share in that would be a good idea. In addition to that, and my primary reason actually, is I think that map probably does the least to accomplish the goal that is supposed to be accomplished by this whole exercise, because it really does, if you look at the maps, it dilutes the Hispanic population the most, as opposed to comparing it to the Purple map, which definitely gives us a good, solid Hispanic district. And I believe that is the intention of the law. It is, you know, although it does meet the criteria, obviously, or wouldn't be in front of us, but I think that it probably does the least to help our Hispanic population. My maps that, in no particular order, that I would consider are the original Purple map, the UPS map, as Mr. Green referred to it, the Deirdo, and probably the green with some tweaks as well. I think we could probably tweak that to be a little bit better, to represent the neighborhoods a little bit better. I think that no matter how hard we try, because of some of the rules that are in place, and I think depending on how you look at our map or our city, you're always going to be dividing people. I mean, obviously, we don't want to go down a residential street if we can avoid it, but it's really difficult when you have the numbers that have to be met. So, I mean, I look at this over and over and over, and, you know, the area by Vista High School, you know, on some maps, it's cut out, and other maps, it's included, and, you know, you can make an argument both ways. I mean, it's not that rural there in that area. It certainly is if you get out to Taylor, but that's one street, very few homes represented in that area, not like, say, Gale, Goodwin, Michelle, a lot of houses in that area, and I drive through that all the time, and I know that it is a very similar community that lives in that area. So anyways, those are my four that I'll throw out there. If we can narrow it down to three, that might be even better, but maybe at this point, four would be enough, and that's my suggestion of what we accomplish this evening.
Councilmember Green again.
I was just going to speak to the Sarah Spinks' map a lot, because I know there's a lot of support for it, and I happen to be a huge Sarah Spinks fan, so let me just throw that out there. Word, Sarah Spinks. I grew up in a little bit of that downtown area, and like I said, I've lived all over Vista, and when I look at the schools that are outside, like in District C and in District B, you know, in that particular Spinks' map, I feel like that does split that community up a lot, because we do have a lot of those, you know, kids from that Vista Magnet area, that Townside area, the East Drive, the Bird Streets over there, per se, all of those, I feel like that kind of goes hand in hand with that downtown district. So when I'm looking at like the Deirdo map, you know, it does kind of cut off there at Taylor where it says, hey, let's keep that rural over there, and it does keep in, you know, that Bo Beers, that Vista High, that Gale, that Goodwin-type area. So, you know, I like the downtown, you know, being defined, per se, but I do feel like Councilman Aguilera said, is it cuts off a whole part of that community and really divides the neighborhood. So, and once again, having three council members really vested in that area, having a distinct, you know, knowledge of that area and need to advocate for it, I think is best for our community as well. So just want to speak one more time on that and make sure people know why I didn't want that one, so, there you go.
Councilmember Rigby.
I have a question for Dr. Levitt. I don't know if you can answer it or not, but like I said, the maps are hard to see on some of those streets that the boundaries have been drawn on. So I wanted to ask you, on the UPS, the University Popular Student map, and both of Vargas's maps, the boundary south of seventy-eight between C and D, which is west of Breeze Hill, west of Melrose, what street is that? I can't tell. I can't make it out. I even went and looked at the big giant wall map in our suite, and I can't tell.
So, that's a great segue into something I did want to remind everyone at home as well, is that on drawvista.org, in addition to the paper maps, we also have an electronic web viewer where you can zoom in and out of each of the maps. Every single proposal is up there. You can turn each one off or on individually, or put on multiple ones at once to see where your district would be in multiple proposals. And so I think this is the functionality that we want to make sure, and if we have the internet here, we can certainly even put it up if we wanted to tonight, but that street is Pomelo Drive. And I'm looking at our online viewer right now, and it's Pomelo Drive.
That's what I was afraid of, because splitting up that neighborhood right down the middle of it is, to me, not a good idea. So I'm not, I would never be in favor of splitting the Breeze Hill and that area, Alta Vista, Hacienda Heights, Vista Estates. I would not be in favor of taking that neighborhood and just slicing it in half like that. And that's not a major thoroughfare. That's not an artery. That's a very small neighborhood street. So I don't see that that fits that particular criteria, and it does slice up a neighborhood. So none of these are what I would want to run, just run off with in its entirety. I think they have to be a little, there has to be a little bit of tweaking on any of these. But as I said, you know, the Purple map, I think, is a good starting point. I thought Ms. Fukuyama's map was a good starting point. The Deirdo map, I think we could, we can work with, but the other maps, I'm really not seeing, not seeing those. So for now, those are the three that I'm going to stick with if we're narrowing it down.
Deputy Mayor.
My top four maps would be the Purple map, the Green map, the UPS, the UP Students map one, and the A Deirdo map. One thing that I'd like to see is, I'd like to give as much, to the extent that we can, I'd like to give some consideration to the propensity to vote, if we're allowed to consider that. In looking at the number of voters that a district will produce, I believe that it's in the interest of democracy, of the greatest quantity of participation, and so I'd like to, you know, the Southern District, for instance, is the highest propensity population, and the, almost no matter what map, the Northern District would have the lowest propensity. So you have a situation where you could have a swing, even though your population is fairly balanced, you could have a swing, you know, from two thousand to six thousand voters. You could have a four thousand vote swing in participation. So I'd like to see us come up with something within the population guideline that reflects that idea and tries to, again, work within the legal framework to create a district, to create districts that have the greatest quantity of participation in all of them, because this also reduces the ability to manipulate turnout and all kinds of games that can be played, and really gives the residents and the voters in that district a better chance to let the democratic process work. So, you know, I- a better chance to let the democratic process work. So, you know, I probably would have to put the purple map fairly high on my list, but would agree that there could be some changes made that would make it a better map.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and go my maps, because I studied them all also. Sarah Spinks' map, my problem with that is I think that downtown belongs to everyone. And so I wanted to, I thought everybody should have kind of a representative that knew about the downtown. So that's why I didn't pick that one. But I picked the UPS, UPS, the students, the UP Students or the UPS Students, in no particular order. Vargas map, number one, the purple map, and the Derald, Derald, Derald. Doodle. Okay, got it. Okay, so those are the four that I picked. So that's kind of, so I think we narrowed it down to pretty much, how many did we narrow it down to? Has everybody got, I mean, three of us, four, three of us picked those four, I think. So, where do we go from here now? What would you like us to do? Do you want us to vote? Are we looking for a motion and a vote, or what?
It would be helpful to have some clear direction to staff as to which ones to bring back. We could go through your comments. And it would appear from my notes that most everyone mentioned the purple map. Most mentioned Deirdo and UPS. And beyond that, I would have to sit down and tally them to see how those worked out. But I think...
I think three of us said the Vargas one, also, I think three of us had the Vargas one, if I wrote it down right.
Two.
Just two?
Just two, yes.
Okay. So what does that tell you? Have you got enough direction, or no?
Why don't we simply ask for a vote on each of the maps?
All the way through them, or just these?
Just, just the ones that I think that have been mentioned. I don't think we need to go any further. So if somebody would like to make a motion for a map that they like, we can just go through them.
Deputy Mayor, did you just push your button? Deputy Mayor?
I did.
Okay.
Just to be clear, you're asking us to basically make a motion to bring the map forward at the next meeting, not necessarily a vote of approval of that map?
That's correct. Simply which ones to bring forward for further consideration.
I would move that the purple map be moved to consideration in the next meeting.
So individually, you want to do it? Okay.
If I could, if I could jump in here and make a suggestion that as part of the motion, if you want changes to a particular map, or things you'd like to try for, that we include that, whether or not we bring back just the purple map with changes, that way it would be clear to me, especially which maps you would like to see modifications to in preparation for the next meeting, or...
Then I would amend my motion to ask that the purple map and such variants, as are requested, to be produced by NDC from the council also be brought back.
Do we have to worry about pairing on that at all? Because I would think on that one, on the purple map, it looks like we'd have to, there are two people that are paired together on that one, are there not?
Not on the purple map.
On the purple one?
But my question, my question is really about, you know, we've heard a lot today about Breeze Hill in particular. And I have to apologize to Ms. Brown. We didn't have her contact information. We're trying to get ahold of her as we're running up to the meeting this time. But we didn't, weren't able to get ahold of her to ask her about her map, some questions we had. But it would be really helpful to kind of have an understanding of what the changes are, that especially with regards to Breeze Hill, that you'd like us to look into or test for the next meeting.
I don't know that we can, because to change these maps, you have to look at the population of each of the precincts, going back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. And is that something we're prepared to do tonight, right here, right now, with every one of these maps, is get that little piece of paper you had out before that had all the population of each precinct? Because, I mean, I can't say, oh, I want to see this line moved up this way, and this line moved that way. I think if we say that the purple map, to come back with modifications that we come up with at a workshop, or however we're coming up with these modifications, or submitted modifications, I don't know that we need to go through every modification right here and now. Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I don't need, I don't need it now. I just, you know, I would like some clarification before we go in and start making lots of changes or to any of the maps. If we want to modify anything for the next meeting, you know, it would be useful to know, what's the goal in terms of, like, you know, what would we have to do in order to get there? You know, so, I mean, we, you know...
Honestly, what I'd like to do is have a public workshop where we can come down off of the dais with a big Sharpie pen and a giant map, and just have this discussion with flip flops on. I really think that's what we need to do. We need to get down into the weeds on this thing. But I would, I would second the motion that I would like to see the purple map come back and be available for modification. Any of these are going to come back, and they're going to be open to modification, because I don't think any one of these is a map that we're ready to run with.
Yes, Councilwoman Aguilera.
Can I make a suggestion? We just leave it so that they're open to minor modification? I mean, we don't have to be specific tonight.
Sure. I just wanted to see if there's anything we could bring back for the 13th to...
Because if there's too many, yeah, if there's too many major modifications, it's no longer the purple map. I mean, so it has to be minor modifications. But I think...
May I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
Finish first.
No, please, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, Councilwoman Rigby made a good point, that we're probably not going to be able to make those modifications sitting at the dais today. But certainly, if Councilman Franklin wants to make a change to the purple map, let's say, he could probably submit that to you. And you could say that's acceptable. And if someone from the public wants to make a change to the purple map, then they can also submit that to you. And maybe we end up with Purple A and Purple B at our next meeting.
We just need anything by June 2nd, in order to have time to get it processed, to go online on June 3rd.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just going to ask, we're still accepting submissions from the public? No, it's cut off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cut off last week, I think.
Okay. So we're going to, at our next council meeting, we are going to consider any potential edits to these maps as directed by individual members of the council?
That sounds like what you're proposing, yes.
Yeah. Does that fit what your desire was?
I don't think my desire is relevant.
Okay, well, that's, that's my desire. So that, that limits the total number of changes to five different people's, you know, whims. So we've, we've limited it from the entire universe of Vista residents down to the five of us. So I have a feeling we would see a limited number of possible revisions. And I'm certainly open to whatever revisions, be they drastic or minor. Although, you know, I'm not going to get into defining what minor revisions are. I think that's too difficult, but...
So, but, but do you want all of us to submit our modifications by the second, by the second? Is that what you're saying? That all the, anybody has any changes in any of these that we...
We need to have anything posted by the 3rd, for you guys to have a discussion about it on the 13th.
And those will be the final, the final submission, the final tweaks would be, right? By January the 2nd?
Those would be the final, the final tweaks. Obviously, you don't need to make individual changes. But as I understand the motion, it would be the purple map plus any modifications proposed by a member of the city council.
That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll still second that.
Okay, so, oh, Councilmember Green.
It's quite all right. Let's just vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, so that one passes unanimously. So, next. Councilmember Green, looks like you're pushing your button.
Pushed the wrong button.
It's okay.
All right, so, Purple Draft, so I recommend that we submit the Deirdo map. I move that we submit the Deirdo map for approval at the next meeting.
Okay, do I have a...
I'd like to second if the maker of the motion would make the motion similar in form to the previous question. In other words, that you would allow such modifications as might be submitted by the members of the council.
I echo my fellow council member's sentiment with my motion.
Fantastic. Then I would second that motion.
Okay. Please, cast your votes. And that motion passes unanimously. So now we have two maps. Any others?
The green map was amongst at least three of our tops, no?
The student, I believe.
Okay, then I'll make a motion for the Universidad Popular Students Map One. I think that was, was that on most of our lists? So I would make a motion that that map be brought back with any modifications as might be requested by any member of the city council.
I'll second it.
Okay. Please, cast your vote on that. That one passes unanimously also.
I'm trying to find the green map.
Are these old speaker?
No, well...
Those were, those were new ones?
Well, I was gonna...
I just deleted you.
I was gonna go ahead and make the motion for the Universidad Popular map. But I'll throw the, I'll throw the green map out there. Because I think that was mentioned with some minor modifications.
Same motion as for the rest with minor modifications?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Is there a second? Do you just want me to second it? Okay. Okay, cast your votes. Okay, that gives us four. And, yep, Councilmember Frank, or Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Withdraw my request to speak.
Any others? How about, how about Vargas? Cipriano Vargas. I would make a motion that we include that one with the same criteria that you're saying.
I would second that motion.
Okay. That's Vargas One, yeah.
Which one? The first one?
Was C Vargas One? Councilwoman Aguilera? Well, wait, do we, do you want to vote on this one, or is it, you have something to say about that one?
I have a question. One of the things that concerned me is there's just a little cutout right there in, on C, in the downtown. It just, it goes across Vista Village. Yeah. That was very odd to me. There's a little, I'm not sure why. I don't know if Mr. Vargas is here, and why...
I can explain that, actually, myself. So in order to create these population units, what we generally did was we followed census block group lines, so collections of blocks. And they generally follow the major roads, but not always perhaps as precisely as we'd want. And so this is a case where the block group actually goes one block north of Vista Village. You know, there are very few people in that little three-block area that could easily be modified at council's request.
Okay, Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, it's not a big deal, yeah.
Deputy Mayor, did you want to say something?
I was just going to offer that if it was the pleasure of the council, I would be content with the first four, if we wanted to limit the total number of maps that are considered.
That's fine with me.
I'm good with that.
I think four is enough.
I think the four that we have is a good starting point for us.
I personally would rather get rid of the green map than the Vargas map, because I feel like the green and purple map are very similar. And when I was looking at the changes that I would want to make to the green map, it basically turned it into the purple map. So I would say that if we only want to go over four, that we get rid of the green one, we keep the purple one, and we take Vargas as our fourth, because it is so much different than the other maps. So take that for what you like.
Okay, so where are we? So, do you want to vote on the Vargas map? We have a first and a second on that, or...
Yeah, I guess we should do that.
So let's vote on that, and then you can determine if you want to narrow it down. How's that?
What is this in front of us?
On the Vargas one. So vote on that, and then we'll determine. Okay, that passes with one abstention. So, now, now where are we? One, oh, yeah, no, abstention and no vote, sorry. I set it wrong. Okay. Okay, so, now, who's got something to say? Did you want to narrow it down or anything? No? Are we done?
I think we can be fine submitting the five maps. And at the next hearing, we can cut it down. And we can make our changes between now and the second. That's my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
I do want to talk about, so, so the next time that we're going to talk about this is at a council meeting or another public hearing? Because I really would like to have a workshop where we can get out the different precincts, the populations, which is how some of these were accepted and not accepted was because they didn't have the right population. And on the map that's on your website, you have the map by precinct with the population in them. So that when we're moving a line from this block to that block, or et cetera, I would like for us to be able to see that. I want to be able to have the numbers in hand. And I would like for us to have something that we can work with interactively, because this doesn't really work for this project. So I would like to see us do something maybe a little different, having some kind of a workshop and interactive where we can get down into the weeds, get down and mark up maps, and see what works and what doesn't work, rather than coming in with already very stiffly made maps, and then still having some concerns. I want us to be able to just sit down somewhere, and the five of us talk about it, with a couple hundred of our best friends watching. That's what I would like to see happen. And I know that the 13, I know because of this, this letter from this attorney, that we have a timeline before we start getting into trouble and into, into some, some issues. But I think if we're going to do this, we need to do it right. We need to do it collectively, collaboratively. Anyway, that's my thought. I'd like to see us do a public hearing. And I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I don't know the dates. I know the 3rd is Saturday. Am I correct on that? That's the only date I have in my head.
I believe that's, that is Saturday.
So can we have a workshop on Saturday? I'm game.
You can hold your own workshop.
All righty then. I'll let you all know where it is.
So with that, I see no more speakers here, and we're going to close the public hearing. I guess we already closed it. Yeah, and so, anything, City Attorney?
No, just to reiterate, reiterate the deadline that Dr. Levitt mentioned, which is the 2nd, so that we can post to be timely for the meeting on the 13th.
Which is Friday.
Yes.
But your workshop is on Saturday. Your workshop is on Saturday.
If we receive anything on Saturday, we can get it posted very quickly, or at least let you know whether or not it's feasible. And, so that is the last day we can take anything for this. And we're working under that 10-day diet, you know, that deadline imposed not by us, but by...
Councilmember Green, do you have something?
So just so I'm clear on what we've accomplished tonight, we've cut the maps down from 18 maps to five maps. And basically, what we have now is another 48 to 72 hours as a council collectively, to give you our suggestions of minor tweaks we won of these maps. And that by the 2nd or 3rd, which is Saturday, you'll make those available to the public to review and be able to present their opinions on at our next meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
I would mention that that is not collectively, that is individually.
Yeah, that's individually.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
What time on June 2nd is the deadline?
Just midnight, you know. If I could get it on Saturday morning, then we'll draw it in on Saturday.
Okay. Well, let's say the hard deadline is midnight. If you, if you happen to take pity on someone who's late, like me, or anyone else...
If you, if you happen to take pity on someone who's late, like me, or anyone else, could I make a motion to close the public hearing and adjourn our meeting?
Oh, I think we already, I think I already closed, but okay.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, 3rd, okay, 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 so the public hearing is closed, and the meeting is adjourned.
Great.
Do you have anything, yeah, I didn't ask you if we had anything.